All right, we'll see. So, welcome. This is the Village of New Paltz Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, January 19th, 2016. And the first item is public comment. If anybody has any specific comments, criticisms, whatever, now's the chance. Okay. So, the first, we have a few items tonight. A quick look at an amendment to a site plan, PV 1601 for 58 Main Street, then pre-application, PV 1602, 87, 91, and 93 North Chestnut Street. We have several zoning items, mostly updates, but a little bit of a discussion about 21223 work that's ongoing. Administrative business is just minutes, sort of a quick look at what's going to be on the next meeting. I do want to spend a little time dealing with this letter regarding trying to increase the retainer for legal services. Christina just gave us a request to close out a trust and agency escrow account, so we could add that to the administrative business. And then, an executive session to discuss matters leading to possible employment of an individual or corporation. Everybody okay with that stuff? All right, Bobby, come up. All right, so the first item is PV 1601, which you received as a site plan, amendment to a site plan application. But tonight, primarily what we're doing is really just considering this request that we received from our building inspector, which, I apologize, only came in today. He began work on it last week, but other matters pulled him out of the office, and so he was only able to finish it today with the holiday. The office wasn't open yesterday. So, really, I'll give Bobby a chance to give you a quick overview, but basically understand that he'll be back later for a full site plan review for these additional amendments. But tonight, we're just considering whether to authorize a temporary, or permit for a temporary structure and temporary certificate of occupancy. So, why don't you take it away, Bobby?
So, on the plans that you have, the, this is the southwest face, there's a piece labeled enclosed patio, next to where it says one and two-story wood frame. You can see at the far edge of that, there's a remarkable, the old, we had a linear bottle shed that ran from the building to the wooden shed. It's about, I think, maybe 200 some odd square feet total size. That was our old bottle shed. It also contained the propane tanks and where we did our return for our keg area. We removed that in anticipation of the gas line that was built through the property. That all had to come down. The gas line had to, the gas line started coming from the village, supposed to come the other way. We ended up having to come through here, across Lee Reinhardt's property, so that necessitated all this to come down. We took that down, we built through it, and we relocated our bottle shed to the, I guess it's on this thing, it's called roofed wooden enclosure over here. But it's caused a drainage problem. Essentially, the parking lot is now draining through the alleyway, and it has to be repaired. There's a foundation damage due to it. So, we want to put our bottle shed back where it was. The linear aspect of it is not very good for us. It'd be far better if the shed had the, a different shape. But in the interim, what I'd like to do is simply build a pavilion, a covered area, and then come back to you guys and say, hey, here's what I want to do on the inside, here's how I want it to look. So, over the winter, I can have some sort of cover over our bottle recycling area, and then, as we proceed through the planning board application, we can talk about what, if we were to enclose that space, what would happen. But for, in the temporary nature, I'd like it to be able to just be a, an enclosed, a covered wooden area.
And that's indicated by the hashed area?
Correct, correct. And it's, it is, if you were to add up the, so the area along the back of it, the long linear shed, if you were to add that up and then compare it to the other two, the hashed area would be bigger. It's about 60 square feet bigger. So, it is not exactly the exact same amount of space we used to have. It is slightly bigger.
Okay.
And that's just because of the shape of making it, it worked out well for the shape of the door. We also have a, this is nothing to do with the planning board, but we also have an issue with every time someone opens the door, back door to our place, the noise goes directly to one of our neighbors. We would love to alleviate that by having a sort of a vestibule. So, we have an ulterior motive to creating some sort of small vestibule in the area, sort of trap the sound when kids go out, like a double door, I guess we call that.
So, is that part of this design or that's later?
It is on the design I gave you, but not in terms of the open pavilion, because it'll just be open.
Right, okay.
Nothing will change with that.
Right, that's for later.
Yeah, but on that other design, I mean, that's sort of our ulterior motive to have a vestibule in there, so also to have a, also for, I guess, for air, for trapping the temperature in there. But bars are usually very hot, not very cold. But either way, what I want for now is just the ability to put a covered area over there, put a temporary wall up and have my bottles and stuff on that side of it. And of course, because of that, I want to take down this shed, the one that's causing the problem, and do my work on the, in the alleyway. That's apparently not, that part wasn't an issue for, for prior.
Right, okay.
I guess that's it?
Any questions from the board members? So, your schedule then is, assuming that we approve this tonight, you'll go ahead and...
I would build the, let's call it a pavilion.
Go ahead and complete, yeah, so you'll complete the roof for this.
Right.
And one of the questions that was raised today was in terms of dealing with water coming off of that roof? You have, you're going to put gutters or something?
Yeah, I'll do the whole thing, yeah. Well, the one side I would have to, because that's draining onto my neighbor.
Right.
And the other side is draining onto my porch, though, yeah. So, yes, if there's an issue about whether I'll take care of the neighbor's side, absolutely.
All right, so you'll make sure that that doesn't go down the hill to them?
Yeah, and that's Wayne Bradford, by the way.
No, I know.
We work together anyway. But yes, absolutely, of course.
So, and do you have any sense about your timing for when you want to come back?
Only in the sense that I think I'll miss the next meeting, so obviously, I wouldn't be for that. But, you know, once it's covered, I can do it at a leisurely pace. I'd like to have it up and running by the next time it gets cold again, so I won't have much of a, you know, once, really, the bottles don't need to be warm and, you know, cozy, they just need to be dry so the boxes don't get wet and kids can't steal. Stealing is really the biggest issue.
But you have other things planned? You've talked about...
Yes, as a vestibule, I'd rather turn it the other way. It'd be much more efficient.
But you also have some drainage work you wanted to do?
Yes, over here.
So, that'll be all part of the full site plan?
Correct, correct. And it will be on this piece. What we want to do is simply return this to what it was, remove the bottle shed that was there. We built a temporary shed there, we'd like to take it down and return it to what it looked like.
So, I would say, you know, try to think about if it works for you to come back, you know, if...
In March.
Yeah, I was going to say, like, in March.
Right, right, right. And then we'll just pick up from there. And I don't have a problem with any sort of, you want to put a thing on here that I have to build it within a certain amount of time, or tear it down, that'd be fine with me, too, you know, so that there's some compliance on my part, I have no problem with that.
Build what?
Well, like, in other words, if I build this covered area here, you're issuing a temporary permit on it, right? There can be some sort of sunset on it that I have to...
Well, it is. The law says that you can have that structure up for up to nine months.
Okay, great, great. That's why I have no problem with...
Right, so it would be advisable, then, to come back and complete the full site plan so that you're not running afoul of that, and you don't get all of your necessary approvals in time to go ahead and do all the work.
Perfect.
All right, so...
Oh, and just one last thing I should tell you. This is the, this area here is the enclosed, approved area of the liquor for the bar anyway, right? There's no, there's no liquor issue here. The area that says enclosed patio is the area under the liquor license.
Okay.
It's not like it's expanding that piece. That's a liquor license question.
Okay.
Sometimes people ask, I assumed you would ask it, but I didn't realize, but that's an issue.
Okay, yeah, for this, I don't think that's an issue.
Yeah, that's why you can't exceed the limits of the enclosed area, because that's what the liquor license says.
Okay, thanks. All right, so, for the planning board, then, we have a request from our building inspector to, and I'll read, "Grant the Building Department permission to issue a permit to construct a temporary structure and to issue for it a temporary C of O. It would be for a porch roof that may eventually become part of an addition that is being proposed in application PV 1601." That application is for approval of a site plan amendment. And so, the motion is to grant the Building Department permission to issue this permit?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, you're good, so...
Thank you. See you much.
All right, safe travels. Okay, so, going to PV 1602, 87, 91, and 93 North Chestnut Streets, net zero development. So, this is a pre-application. You guys are going to do a presentation, and then we'll have a discussion to do.
Yeah, you do have people like this. My, they talk to the local community.
She wants it there? All right, then, honey, move.
So, we moved everything forward and then...
All right, just actually can look around.
Perhaps I should speak from here? Is that good?
Yes, if you need a microphone, we can also...
Okay. On the new chair. Well, I know many of you from other walks of life in New Paltz, but I haven't met all of you, and I'll afford to do it. My name is David Schepler, and I'm going to take a little bit of time here to introduce our project. I know that you've seen probably our package. I'd like to introduce our team, give you a little bit of the inspiration for what we're calling Zero Place right now, and then dive into the details of, I'll show you some elevations, look at our site plan, and address some of the comments that Dave Gilmore has already constructed in the memo that he wrote last week. So, let me thank him for that. So, first, thank you all for giving us your time. We had met previously with Maurice Whitman and Dave to give us, as I'm sort of feeling out this thing and saying, geez, is this something that's realistic for me to pursue in New Paltz? I am not a real estate developer, I'm a longtime resident of New Paltz here, but this is something that I've been dreaming about doing for a while, since I met Tony Abbe, and I'll give you a little sense of that here in a second. But I wanted to meet with Maurice and Dave and just ask the question of, is this of interest to the village? Is this something that I can begin to even think about taking a risk on? And so, this is now our second meeting, and I really look forward to continuing to work. Let me introduce my team real quick. Again, I'm David Schepler, I'm a technologist by trade, I work in Connecticut, but I live here in New Paltz, so this is kind of a nighttime and weekend activity for me. My first partner and partner in crime, in many respects, is Anthony Abbey, who many of you, you probably all know him very well from his Green Acres development and others in New Paltz. And by the way, I was his first resident in Green Acres. Dave Toder is our architect, and you all know him very well, and I guess you know Barry, too. I'm probably the only new face for many of you, is that correct?
I have been before this board for some time. Official engineer at Wolfus and Stone Ridge, Michael McNaggers.
And our third partner is actually leading a planning board session down in Gardner right now, Keith Leibolt, and may, perhaps many of you know him as well. Okay. So, my inspiration for this, so, when I moved to New Paltz, I was very interested in trying to find a home at the highest levels of energy efficiency. I was very frustrated by kind of all the greenwashing out there, and I really struggled to find a home that had all the features that I wanted, until I met this guy, Anthony Abbey, and realized that he had a very similar vision about what's possible, and he was ready to do it right then. So, we joined, we, I joined with him to become his first client in Green Acres, and so far, my home there has functioned amazingly well. It's achieved net zero energy for seven years running and then some, and now I have many neighbors who are achieving the same thing, and Dave Toder was the architect of all those buildings. But I realized that, you know, net zero energy is great, it's a fun thing that I can kind of consume and spend a little extra money on, but I know that most people can't afford what I can. And I thought, geez, is there some way that we can bring this level of energy efficiency to more people? Is it possible to achieve this level of energy capability on, in a multifamily way? And then, when I caught wind of what you guys were doing with the MBR, what was then the North Chestnut Zone, and I guess another name as well, things started to fall into place, and it seemed to be possible that, wow, the stars are aligning to make this possible. And that's what we have, and that's what we're pursuing here. We're calling it Zero Place because we hope to redefine the word zero, to make it a positive word and not a negative word. And by that, we, of course, are emphasizing the net zero energy aspects of this project. So, just to orient you a little bit, we should probably flip this over so that north is up. We all know the former STS property and park and ride here that the state has decided to, in a sense, abandon. The nice thing is, it's right smack in the middle of the new MBR, and we believe having a project like this to sort of anchor this new district is going to bring tremendous value to New Paltz. So, again, if there's any questions about where this is, we highlighted it there. Okay, so what is Zero Place? Zero Place is a four-story, multifamily housing unit with a floor of retail space. And you can see, this is the view from sort of the rail trail. Don't over-index on anything particular here, this is a, we've just had these 3D renderings done in the last couple of weeks, and we're still playing with colors and trying to put in the landscaping as we really envision it for the future, but at least you get a sense of this now. So, this is from the southwest corner, looking at the building. Now, let me show you the energy features. And Dave is going to go into more detail on the architectural elements of here, of this, and show you, take you through the elevations and so forth. This is a real image from across the corner of Mulberry and 32 North, and you can see the power lines superimposed and so. This is actually incorrect, there are no power lines that go behind this building, everything's in front of it, but disregard that. But you can see some of the interesting features of this. We would like to put significant awnings over the first floor to enable things like cafe tables outside in the warmer months on both sides of the building. You can see the, no, 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 let me show you the energy features. So, this is sort of a bird's eye view. We plan to put as much solar as we can possibly fit on this thing, again, towards the goal of achieving net zero energy. And for those of you who are not familiar with that term, it simply means the building is able to produce more energy over the course of the year than it consumes. So, in the, at nighttime, of course, it's pulling off the grid, but hopefully giving back plenty during the day. Of course, in the winter months, the production is a little bit weak, but we hope to make up for that in the fall, spring, and summer. So, you can see that we plan to put solar across all of the roof and as well the, sort of, the awnings over the upper three floors on the south side of the building. On the north side, we would like to create a space for residents where they can go and look at the ridge and, sort of, a community space here under this solar shaded section of the roof.
And the space under that, I'm sorry, to, under the raised solar, what is that for?
Just gathering public space. You could imagine having even, you know, like a cooking area or lounge, couches and seats and places to gather and hang out for residents. We've been in contact with the Walkhill Valley River Trail Authority, Kristi DeBoer, discussing about, what's that?
Rail trail.
The rail trail. What did I call it?
River trail.
River trail, yeah. Yes, the rail trail, to talk about blending certain features of our property, soon to be our property, with the rail trail, to try to bring it into the overall design, to encourage, to build pleasant pathways, to sort of possibly open up the space a little bit, perhaps to provide public bike racks and so forth, so that the public can move between the rail trail and the retail floor of this building with ease. We intend to continue to preserve the wooden bridge that's on the north side of the parking lot for public use as well and so forth. We also, this is not an accurate portrayal, again, don't look too much at the details of the space. For example, you don't see the bus stop there. We fully intend to keep the bus stop for the public along 32 North. We would like to place additional parking along the street, and we've been talking to this, about this, to DOT, to the county, and I think, and Dave's also familiar with that, as well as parking on Mulberry Street for both handicap folks, possibly an electric car charging station there, and primarily for the use of the retail space as opposed to the residential spaces. All the residential parking would exist in the current park and ride, which will become the, essentially, in part, anyway, the parking lot for the residential places. Okay? So, with that, I'd like to let Dave and Barry take you through, again, the elevations and the site plan a little bit, and then, I think it makes sense to just walk through Dave's comments, unless you'd like to steer us in some other way. So, we're all ears here, you know, let us know your first reactions to this, guide us on what we should be concerned about, what you like, and help us towards, our goal, honestly, is to be before you in February at your next meeting with the real application, because we've been busting our behinds to try to get everything in place for you. Okay, questions? This is like a little one-pager to kind of net all of that out, do something a little more conceivable.
You know what? The danger is...
Mine? What's this? Do I have access? No.
No.
Do we have another one? Otherwise, I got to go and do the table.
Try to direct the voice.
Yeah, why don't you just do that and just put it here?
Okay. This one mine? I think that's right, yeah. Michael, tell me if you have enough. That's right. So, this is the Route 32 North elevation, the east elevation. We've got notes on it about how much solar production we expect to have on the rooftop as well as the south wall. Got a mix of materials underneath the porch roof, which is about 12 foot high, the first floor ceiling height would also be about 12 foot high interior. So, a mix of cultured stone, mimicking bluestone, and red brick above that, and some accent pieces, give it some nice interest. And then above, a mix of trim and stucco features and clavert siding to keep it interesting and bring the scale of the building down, make it a nice part of the neighborhood. So, retail all along the first floor. One of the questions that we have for the board is about number of units. We have seven units blocked out, but some of it depends on how is the area subdivided. And so, that'll be something we look for guidance on limitations so that we work within what you want to see. So, the structure will be similar to the Green Acres homes with insulated concrete form walls, very energy efficient in height and earthquake proof, hurricane proof, very So, and in terms of building height, the Village Code for this neighborhood allows up to 50 foot. It defines building height as the roof deck, with allowance beyond that for parapets and roof edge features, as well as elevator and stair penthouses as required for accessing roof deck. That's our understanding of it. And so, in terms of the roof deck, the entire roof deck slopes from east to west, so we have a simple drainage system. And you can see here on the back, they're hard to see. You can look at your back to see a little bit, a little better. We'll have, basically, we'll have downspouts and slot scuffers, that way you won't have a problem with the noise of water draining through the center of the building, and nor any concerns about, you know, bringing water in that you're then taking out of the building. So, that means that at the east side, it's 46 foot building height, and then it's actually, it's actually 45 foot at the rail trail side. And then, the parapet comes up about three feet, three and a half feet, there would be guardrails, so it would be, you know, safe by building code. And then, here at the roof terrace area on the north, we've lifted the solar panels up. You can't really see the ones on the main deck, they just kind of stick a little bit above the parapet. But then, they're lifted higher so you can occupy the space underneath, and then you have balanced sun and shade, depending on the season and the angle of sun, time of day, and all that. So, you can see there are three stories of residential apartments. They're an even mix of two-bedroom and one-bedroom on each floor, so there are eight two-bedroom and eight one-bedroom on each floor, so 16 on each floor, so 48 apartments, even mix of two and one bedroom. Let's see, other features. The porch roof is suspended from above on tie rods, so you don't have, you know, posts interfering with the open space there. And so, there should be a very nice, you know, blending possible, say, at this front area that's shown there with paving, pavers, permeable pavers likely, so that you have a nice spot for potential cafes or other, or retail areas to kind of spread out onto the sidewalk a little bit and have a nice interaction between, you know, the internal and exterior spaces. Yeah, there's some notes about general square footage. Let's see, the one-bedroom apartments are about 700 square foot each, the two-bedroom apartments are around 10, 40, 1100 square foot each. The first floor retail, there's about 14,500 square foot total of retail space, and currently it's drawn out at seven units, about 1400 to 3300 square foot each. The total building square, building footprint is 17,330 square foot, and so on four stories, that's a little over 69,000 square foot. I guess that's most of what I wanted to tell you about the building. Are there any questions? Barry's going to talk more about the site plan and give you a sense of those issues.
Would you mind?
Yeah.
We see our goals of this, of the...
We see our goals of this, of course, this has to succeed financially, right? But our goals are, as I said before, to achieve the nets or energy goal, to make this, to really achieve the very highest level of efficiency, essentially set, I think, a standard of the state. What's that?
The other goal, the other goal is for us to really launch this new MDR. We believe strongly in it, something that will bring tremendous value to the village. You know, I for one have been wanting to see a radical improvement in that Thirty Two North corridor for a long time, because frankly, it's not the prettiest of places in New Falls, right? So we love the vision of it, and we think this is a great way to launch it. And then, and then the third goal is just to bring value, true value to our residents and engage the rail trail in a park, in a place along New Falls where it's kind of weak in terms of the number of businesses that can really support and engage with the rail trail.
Okay, Dave kind of introduced where the site is. I think everybody knows where it is. This is an existing condition map, the graphic. The site now, Thirty Two here, Mulberry's here. This is the rail trail here. Most people know there's an existing parking lot in here. It has, I believe, it has 62 parking spaces in it now. The rest of the site is the former auto repair service tire store. It was destroyed. And you can see the green areas were the only areas that were not impervious on the site, which represented about 89% of the site is covered. That's the condition of the site today also. There is the bus pull-off area here with a crosswalk. There's a sidewalk that runs the full length of the property. What we propose to do in the site is modify the parking lot slightly by adding some parking spaces at this end. We're gonna re-stripe them a little bit, create some green area in the center where we can, some aisles where we can do some landscaping, and then create as much green space as we can on the two sides of the building. The highway side of the building, we want to, you know, make that part of the streetscape with proposed on-street parking along the front here. These, I guess, would ultimately become village parking spaces in front of the building. You know, there's, we need to get some clarification from DOT. I believe we're okay with the sightlines coming out of these two with the parking spaces we show. But, you know, once we get an application, a formal application with this board, we'll send it to DOT and we'll get some solid feedback on this parking. Also, it'd be nice to get some feedback from the members of the board what they think about the on-street parking. The site drains pretty much to the rail trail. You can see the rail trail running through here. It's, the area between the rail trail and here is wooded, various trees. We don't have a lot of detail out other than the topography at this point. We're going to try to maintain as much as that. But the area between the building and here, we'd like to clean this up and basically make the rail trail kind of another frontage to the building. And we do look at the rail trail as kind of like a public way, and we're looking at this site as if it has really three frontages. And I know there's some issues in the, in your review letter, Dave's review letter about meeting the setbacks, so we'd like to discuss that a little later. But what we're doing is reducing the impervious cover, so it will be 85%, which is what the new zoning calls for in this area. And we're increasing the parking to 83 spaces. There are 62 now, and that includes the parking on the street as well as the parking on Mulberry Street here too. Well, the drainage, as I said earlier, currently sheets flows off of the parking lot. There's what I would call some wet swales along the back here that were built as part of that parking lot. And then they overflow into a pipe that runs under the trail and then into the water river. There's some similar drainage here that comes across the culvert that runs across. It's actually shown on the existing village map a little better. But what we're gonna do in the back here is we're gonna take some of our roof drainage, and we're gonna put some infiltration systems under this green area and do some recharge, so that our stormwater management plan will have a reduction in runoff from the, from the current conditions.
And the recharge would be onsite or offsite?
Excuse me?
The recharge would be onsite or offsite?
It would be onsite, yes, and the screen strip in the back of the building here. Take advantage as much of that as possible. We're looking at maybe taking these two green areas here and making rain gardens, which have some pre-treatment, some of the runoff, particularly from the sidewalks and some of the canopy area that would cover some of the sidewalks. We would discharge that into there. And it would be downspouts where the drainage would go into a recharge basin. And then that would, that would be a subsurface system, but that would overflow into the normal drainage.
So the canopies would end up having gutters?
Yes. Yeah, it could be gutters all over there.
Would there be an increase in stormwater runoff?
No, there would be a decrease.
Be decreased?
Yes.
Even with all the roofs and...
Well, we're actually reducing the amount of impervious cover in the site. We're going from 89% to 85%. In addition to that, right now, the existing area of the building, let me go back to that map. This whole area here has basically no drainage. It just sheets flows off into the rail trail property. So we're gonna be putting a building here. We're gonna be collecting that drainage. We're gonna be putting it in some recharge area. We're gonna remove, you know, a significant area of the impervious cover, you know, as you can see in this plan. And we will put some subsurface recharge into that area. So the net result will be a decrease in the runoff in both the volume and the peak flow. You know, the access to the parking lot would stay the same. There's a crosswalk here now and here. We would completely reconstruct the sidewalk across the front of the building. We'd be pulling that back basically to allow the on-street parking. We'd put a crosswalk and crossover at this intersection. There was some talk, I think the county, they met with the county, about putting a crosswalk here, but there's no sidewalk facility down here, so we can't put a crosswalk too, that's, you know, no sidewalks. So, you know, we would put this area, there is a continuous sidewalk on the south side. There's a connection here to the trail. There's like a bridge over the drainage area. And then there is a grated connection here now that's just kind of a mowed area with a culvert pipe underneath. We would maintain this, you know, open this up. State, I'm sure what else I could tell you about the site at this time. We, you know, obviously, are gonna come up with a detailed landscaping plan as well as a storm management plan. Lighting, there's currently lighting in the parking lot. We're gonna leave all those fixtures. We're not proposing any new freestanding fixtures. The lighting around the building will be attached to the building under the canopy, and it'll all be, you know, dark sky type of lighting that complies with, you know, the county has standards they'd like to implement.
Your building height is 50 feet, is that inclusive of the...
David can answer that.
The building height is about 46, as measured to the highest roof deck. Then other parts do a seat back.
I've been reading a lot about solar panels and about firefighting. It seems to be an issue with firefighters being afraid to fight fires because there's not active access on the roof. And I read that the state might be passing a law regarding the layout of the panels. Are you aware of that and would it impact this project at all?
I don't know, that would be my question. Specifically, the rooftop, which you can see in the bird's eye view. Would you pull up the bird's eye view?
Sure.
I can still speak from here. You can see we've left a clear aisle for access, and then there's plenty of width between them, which might not be as easy to see. And there is also those slightly less good access all around the roof perimeter. So we hope that we're addressing that, but certainly when we get to it, we imagine that the building department and the fire department as well will comment on the building design for code compliance.
So we take it in conspiracy?
Believe so, yes.
Are there any other questions on the site issue?
Yes, earlier you had said something about the trees on the west side. Did you mean the tree that you were, you were going to clear that up so there would be an open, basically, an extended open space between the west side of the building and the rail trail itself?
Yeah, this area, this strip along the trail here is all overgrown.
Uh-huh.
Okay, and the area directly adjacent to the building, we would clean that up so it was, you know, more like a park atmosphere.
And do the rail trail people, since that's not the site property...
Well, it's part of the trail system, so we would...
But it's not part of your property, probably.
No, it's not part of our properties.
We've just begun engaging, and I had a conversation with Kristi DeBoer on that very topic. We've just begun that conversation.
So you haven't gotten an answer from them about whether they're...
They're...
If they like that idea or not?
Correct.
I'm actually meeting on Goodyear Rocks tomorrow about that.
We anticipate also coordinating with the Shade Tree Commission, make sure that before we do any work, we're doing whatever one wants.
Shade Tree Commission wouldn't have anything to do with any trees other than 20 feet off of the edge of pavement or an edge of curb? So anything along the rail trail is the rail trail people, not the Shade Tree Commission?
Can I ask, does the board have a landscape consultant they use?
Not currently specifically with it, but the engineering department chooses. If we use it, we'll be able to address those issues, so. To follow, when we were, when we were working on the park and ride parking lot, one of the big issues was how to landscape along the rail trail. In that case in particular, because of neighbors' concerns about headlights as well as aesthetic issues. So in that situation, the rail, the walk about the rail trail was very helpful in working with us. So I'm hoping that they'll be equally helpful in trying to landscape that. But I think from our, from our point of view, we will need to engage them probably, or at least through you, you know, what their plans are, since you are considering this to be an other frontage for your property.
Yeah, I can see if, the benefit to everyone to get rid of the trees that's directly to the west of the building.
Or at least, I wouldn't necessarily get rid of them, but clean the underbrush out.
Clean it out, right, understood. But exactly because of the headlight issue, in the parking area that, west of the parking area that's part of the rail trail,
It's the area.
You might not want to clean it out.
Yeah, well, I think this is a, this will be a good opportunity to give, go back to the neighbors who, now with the parking lot, has been there for a number of years, find out how the landscaping there has worked. Some of it, you know, there was some die, there was some die-off and then trees were re-painted. So we may want to consider that as more comprehensively as we look at the whole plan and then see what kind of arrangements can be made with the rail trail and the developer in order to make, optimize all of the features there in terms of aesthetics and light protection and sort of whatever it is that you ultimately want to do connecting the rail trail to your redevelopment.
Yeah, I'd be curious enough how the lighting's going to affect the neighbors, given it's going to be four stories high.
Right.
And what that will do to the, to the light that's sitting in that group of housing or that group of properties just behind you.
You mean match company apartments? Yeah.
Yeah, well, definitely, we've already started the process of approaching these neighbors. Jim Spencer, for example, on the far, this guy. He's, we've essentially given him this whole presentation, and he's really psyched about the idea of having, you know, some nice stores here. So he's excited, but I've not yet gotten an audience with the other three neighbors there. I intend to do that very soon.
So...
Yeah, go ahead, why don't we continue? Then I want to sort of read, go back to my site and look through some of the, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna ask what your projected market is for the apartment. Will there be, like, elementary school students living there? Or do you, maybe just being college-age or professionals?
So I think our target there, first of all, we're going to have 15% affordable housing units per the code. The target, target group is not really students. That doesn't mean that students are forbidden from, I guess, but of course, we're, the price point of these things are probably closer to the ridge near Senior Ponce, right? There, these apartments will be well-accoordinated with nice kitchens and nicer features. They'll have all of the electric and possibly wifi rolled in. There's no additional utility built for that. So we're gonna provide all of the services to the tenants. They have washer and dryer units in the, in the units and so forth.
So the reason, reason for asking is because the board's gonna have to consider impacts on resources such as public school deliveries. And so if the one-bedroom units won't support a family, you should provide that narrative to that effect with your materials just to be, like, to rely on when we go through the environmental review process.
Okay. You'll have to help me understand what that means. I mean, I could tell you the number of one-bedroom apartments. I'm not going to let that mean so. Okay, okay. Because I'm certainly not going to forbid children from being with us.
Of course not.
Yeah, I think they're paid for families. It would be fair market rental, other than the, the affordable, the affordable will be mixed, and so you'd almost look at them as, you know, family-nixed type of population. Certainly not being geared towards college students or seniors or a specific age group. So it would be, it would be mixed.
Yeah, and we talked quite a bit about the landscaping, the implications of the rail trail-facing side. You mentioned briefly ideas or maybe intent about landscaping on the other perimeter. Can you talk more about it? What it would look like, street front?
Well, we're looking at this ground floor as almost like a public space. You know, it's gonna be retail, and you have public roads on two sides, and this is a public trail, so this becomes kind of like a public space. You know, there's talk about doing some, you know, outside seating, you know, as well as, you know, landscaping to make it public, like park-like, so that's a, it's a public area.
And then the balance of the parking lot, what is, what's...
Well, this is, well, this is drainage right here, which has a lot of reeds kind of growing in it. This area here would just be grass. We'd try to put as many trees in around the perimeter and in these aisles there as we can, so we, you know, we have the drainage benefit of getting as much tree, canopy-type of tree coverage as we can. So that's what we'd be looking to do on the parking lot. But there's very little right now.
Yeah, there's, there's no doubt in my mind that you would see a noticeable improvement of the...
It's not, yeah.
Although, given where it is now, that's not a big jump, is it?
So Barry, the parking lot, as you can visualize, is 83 spaces. Does that include parking around the...
No, there's 71 in the parking.
71 in the lot.
We're going from 62 to 71 in the lot.
Okay, and street Friday, then...
Okay, in the street, there's eight here and four over here.
And you, the sense is that the lot itself would be specifically for residents? Not necessarily...
No, that needs to be worked out. There's, with not being strictly for residents, because the, because the retail...
Right, that's one of the questions.
To be clear, the code requires half a space per bedroom, so that would dictate...
You mean 61.
Right.
No, you listen to that, actually, it's required. But we imagine, you know, assigning probably one, one spot per unit. That's 48 units. So you imagine at least 48 units in that parking lot being reserved for residents. That leaves a good, what is that?
Well, it's, the code requires 2.5, which is 24...
And that's an incorrect statement. The code requires a half a space per bedroom, not per unit. So you would require 71 spaces.
No.
No.
No, there's a total of seventy-two bedrooms, is that right?
Yeah.
There's a total of seventy-two bedrooms.
Yeah, forty-eight plus twenty...
Thirty-five spaces, thirty-six spaces for the residents, and then thirty-five spaces for the retail, because for every five hundred feet of retail, you need a space.
Oh, sorry.
I was just referring to that, agreed.
Right.
You're saying the twenty-five is per bedroom?
Yep.
Half a space per bedroom?
The retail is currently drawn, if it's at fourteen and a half, that's twenty-nine spaces.
Well, I was just going by your numbers on...
All right, well, we can work...
Well, there's building footprint and there's how much, actually, retail, there's a lot of spaces.
Yeah, I was going by the building footprint, right, square footage.
Right, there's another note, if I just point it out to you on the elevations that I work with, there, that's how much retail is anticipated currently. So it's fourteen and a half thousand, not the full, because there's a lobby area, there's some ancillary spaces as well on the first floor.
Thank you.
Bill, is this the largest solar array in the village, most potential to be?
I have not done a survey of all solar that exists here, but I'd be surprised if there's a larger, larger array than ours. But I don't know that for sure.
But you've been in contact with the microgrid.
Yeah.
So they would certainly be a resource for that.
Right, so let me, I don't know the extent to which you have a conversation with the microgrid institute that's working with the village right now. Tim Rogers connected us with them, they're very interested in including this building as a node in the microgrid for new faults, which, are you, is it, are you familiar with the microgrid project? Okay, the only reason I ask is I don't have much background to give you on the whole resiliency concept of the thing, right? And they see this, the locate, not only is the location of it, but the ethic and the generation resource we're planning to bring to bear here would be an enormous asset for the microgrid. It connects Duzene on the far northeast end of this section of the microgrid to the, to the sewage treatment plant on the far west side. This lies kind of right in the middle, would be a perfect node for that microgrid, so they're bearing, so they're bringing us into that. The advantage to us potentially is it could, and we're talking to them about this, it could obviate the need for onsite backup generation for this, you know, medium-rise building, because you have an elevator in it. But we're exploring that to see if that's really reasonable for you.
Have there been any studies on reflectivity and hat, microclimate, micro birds, light patterns, that kind of thing? Because it's kind of near, I don't know, birds will fly over, there's a right hack there, there's no...
Right, I'm, we certainly haven't ourselves looked into that. I don't know to what extent literature, you know, indicates that a four-story building is a significant threat to... The other difference between this and a lot of the, my very, very sketchy understanding of those sorts of problems is in, you know, the very, the high rises that are built with sheer glass. And this is, although we want to have a generous amount of light for residents, it's nowhere near that in concept, right? You know, so if a bird's flying into this, maybe they shouldn't, maybe a little Darwinian selection is necessary. What's that?
That's true, you had a turkey flown through one of your houses.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so... So what we'd like to do is spend a little more time with you all, sort of going through some additional issues that you haven't heard yet about, things that you'll want to consider for the, as you complete, fill out a full application. You've already provided us a lot of material, but there will be a few additional things. We can start with Dave Gilmore's memo. And... Just a second. So, one of the, the first question is, you have, at the moment, your development plan is on two separate lots. You'll either want to submit a subdivision application and to eliminate one of that and merge the two properties?
You do that by a subdivision application?
Yeah, so, you'll need to just, we can do it concurrently, right? And Victoria, we can do seeker together for doing, if just, if they're eliminating a lot line to create a single lot, we can do that seeker rolled into the same type of site.
Or if you want, you want a separate application for that?
We need a subdiv, we need a...
We need a plot.
We'll need a...
Yeah, we can give you a plot, yeah, that's...
And as well as an application and...
Yeah.
So the application that you're going to fill out, you can indicate that it's site plan, special use permit and subdivision.
Okay, so we'll just add that to it, or, it's really not a subdivision, unsubdivide.
It's...
It's going, right.
It'd be merging the blocks.
Anytime you eliminate a lot line, it's considered a subdivision, requires a new plot.
It goes under our subdivision code, so just...
That's right under subdivision code?
Yeah.
It's right, it's in the zoning.
It's in the zoning code, so. No, we recognize what it is, but for ease...
Do you know what section that is?
Two twelve five.
Twelve five?
Yeah, all the definitions.
That's the definitions?
It's referred to in the memo from David.
So...
Oh, that's a corner lot.
I mean, the other option, if you don't wish to do that and you want to keep it as two lots for some reason, is that you'll then need to draw up some kind of easement between the two properties indicating what it is that's going on on the parking lot with respect to the building in the event that the two lots ever get held under different ownership, separate ownership.
Is there something burdensome about a subdivision?
No, I would recommend that you just do a subdivision.
No, it was always intended would be merged to be a lot.
Yeah, I would recommend that you just merge it to...
So we'll follow whatever procedures necessary to make that happen.
It's not burdensome at all, it should be, and we can just, we'll just do it right in there. So, as, as you've discussed and as you're aware for this NBR district, we're trying to, one of the visions for this is to make it as non-motorized traffic friendly as possible. So we're hoping that over a period of time that we'll create a continuous sidewalk throughout the entire thing, and hopefully connecting to the districts to the south. But along that, we'd like to, as much as we can develop a street aesthetic, so to the extent that you can on your plans, we'd like to have you indicate things about, you know, street property, trees, tables, benches, things of that sort, and get a sense of where those might be, so we can have an idea. And you're clearly doing that, especially, I'm thinking particularly along thirty-two, but you're, you're also thinking on the other side along the rail trail, which is great.
And, and the Mulberry side.
And on the Mulberry side as well. So, the Mulberry Street parking, we should have a little conversation about that. There's, there, it's, I understand your objectives here, there are some traffic issues with having spaces there with fairly high turnover. It's, we have issues about people being able to safely back up from there onto Mulberry Street. There's a fair bit of turning of people onto that, as well as people coming out. So, we'll need to explore that further during...
Let me point out that we did hire a traffic consultant.
Okay.
Who was actually doing a study.
Okay.
And we will have that, you know, they're doing a county study and looking at the intersections, so we'll have some real numbers as to traffic on those roads.
Okay.
We'll, you know, it's something we're going to take a real hard look at.
All right, and they're, they're looking at Mulberry too?
The parking on Mulberry as well as the parking on thirty-two.
Okay.
As well as the whole traffic generation and how that interfaces with the, with the existing background traffic.
Okay.
Are you consulting DOT as you designed that study? Well, not much as we designed... Do you have any contact with the regional DOT office? Yes, yes, we have. Yeah, we've talked into David Corrigan, I've had a couple of conversations with him, and I told him that after we have the meeting here tonight, any tweak and we do, I will send him a formal plan to start the review process. We're also waiting for our traffic consultant to finish accounting and, you know, the background information so that we can forward that to them.
Is Mulberry a village street?
Yes.
So are you working with the village officials on these that are partially within the roadway?
No, we haven't, we have, this is, you're the officials that we're talking to. Well, it's really no different than the parking on thirty-two, thirty-two is a state home.
Right, you need a DOT permit for that, on the village side.
We would, if we need a specific permit from the town, we will apply for that, but I would think that would be part of the planning board approval process, maybe some agreement with the, with the village board, there's going, you know, there's going to be issues that we're going to have to, you know, deal with, with, you know, with the other boards. I mean, this is just the initial, you know, presentation, we're going to make a formal application.
I was just wondering, have you spoken to you already?
No, it's a good point.
I haven't spoken to anybody other than, as far as the parking on Mulberry.
So if we can get just clearly, who the state will involve in that question, we'll approach that review, whatever we need to do.
Yeah, I think initially, before we bring the village into that, but it's a good point, because it does look like it encroaches into, although it, this, the layout of this particular site is, we'll need to, I mean, do you have an up-to-date survey on this?
Yes.
This is, this is the property line here?
Yes, yes, it is.
All right, and so, this has, I guess, been a longstanding thing, because that, the way that property merges into the street, it's pretty much at this point, it has been for twenty years that I've been here, kind of a continuous thing, the street and the property just, so we might be able to better define that actually through this.
If you look at the existing conditions, Matt, the pavement of Mulberry Street and the pavement on the site is one and the same, it's just a continuous sea of pavement.
Yeah.
So we hope to break that up. Now, you know, obviously, this, you know, we need to pull them in a little further we can, but we're trying to keep as much green space as we can. I believe there's enough geometry here for this to move. I personally don't think there's enough traffic coming back up on this Mulberry Street itself to justify a concern of people backing up. It's not like it's a, it's a long straight where people are moving along really fast, you know, you're coming to an intersection here, you got a crossing here, so it's, you know, what traffic there is is moving relatively slow.
Yeah.
I don't think it's, plus, there's also the possibility it's become villagers' parking, you know, because it's really serving the retail space, just like the parking along the street is, and whether the village wants to put meters on, they'll put a meter on it, because it gets a very modest number.
And I don't, I don't want to get too hung up on it, I just wanted to bring it out.
Sure, sure.
So, but yeah, there might be some, because it's coming up now, we might end up wanting to talk to the village and the DPW about some kind of easement or something like that, yep, so. But for now, you can just deal with us on that, and we'll, we'll work that out.
Thank you.
So, I did have a specific question, Dave, for you on that, on your two B, which is the same topic. You made reference to two twelve thirteen C. It wasn't, it wasn't clear to me what in there would provide us guidance when I read that on this question.
In my analysis memo, the third tier, that two B question goes to parking in the front yard on Mulberry Street. And so, the zoning standards provide for, I think generally, no parking in the setbacks. So let me take a look at two twelve thirteen C.
Though the front yard has no setbacks, potentially has for the landlord's discretion somewhere, then maybe it's okay, I won't mind.
So the, the district standards in two twelve thirteen G, you know, so the district standards provide for a front yard, provide for a front yard for all uses with sufficient space for construction of sidewalks and pedestrian amenities. And the front yard setback is, you're with me? Find it when I want it. And that's the front yard requirement, is sufficient space for construction of sidewalks and pedestrian amenities.
Yeah, there's no number attached to it.
And it was my recommendation that there should be space for sidewalks and pedestrian amenities running on Mulberry Street. So, so, and I think that, I wanted to say that there was a front yard distance setback.
I think for that zone, it's zero now.
But I guess it's a, the zero standard.
Yeah, so let's file this as something that we'll talk about next time, yeah.
Specifically, what's the right title for that question?
Well, there's a side yard setback, but in a case like this, isn't it two front yards and two backyards?
Two fronts and two rears.
Yeah.
Since we're talking about that, we, I look at the rail trail as potentially being a front yard, and it says front yards along a street, and then you look at the definition of street, it says something like public, you know, thoroughfare or something, it's not necessarily for vehicles. So, you know, we'd like to see if we could get the interpretation that we basically have three front yards and one rear yard.
How, how does that help?
Then we don't have the ten-foot setback in the back, because the dumpster building back here, see, the rear yard departs ten feet in that zone, and this dumpster enclosure, this is going to be a nice-looking structure with your architecturals on that.
This is not, just to make it clear, this is not a freestanding dumpster, this is, again, a nice...
It'll be like a masonry-type building, the nice doors on it, and also there's a storage unit attached to that for any equipment they need for maintaining outside stuff and that. There's also some talk about maybe even extending this a little further and having an outside area for storing bicycles for the residents, you know, like a bicycle storage area, you know, as well as sort of have bike racks and that around the site. So, you know, moving this ten feet, we lose some parking, you know, and so that's a problem. Also, David pointed out in one of his other comments is on, you have a provision in your corner, we have this thirty-foot triangle here, and that does cut the corner of the building, so we have to slide the building back a little bit to meet that, about five feet.
In which direction, to the north, are you going to slide it?
To the west. Slide it closer to the trail. Yeah, I can't slide it this way, not have any room over it all over here, so we're going to just slide it this way, so that that triangle comes something like this.
That's your line of sight?
So I'll just slide it back, so it, well, it's, that's kind of an old-fashioned line of sight. The DOT line of sight, you know, starts fourteen feet back, that thirty by thirty is something in your zoning code that I refer, goes back to the horse and buggy days, you know, when they just, it said, hey, provide a triangle here, where now you look at the actual speed of the posted speed limit and the traveling, there's a much more complicated analysis you do to establish what the proper sight line is. In fact, we're doing that right now with the parking, it's potentially, these two-end parkings may interfere a little bit with that, and so we're actually thinking maybe just sliding this parking lot a couple more feet to get that clearance, that's something I'm working out with the traffic consultants in DOT. But the thing is, is that calling this a front yard helps us with this building.
But, but, I would even take it up a level, there's a broader point, which is, this side of the building is going to be engaging with the rail trail and the public that way. So the ethic of that and the investments we're going to make in beautifying that side of the building are more... So the ethic of that and the investments we're going to make in beautifying that side of the building are more of a frontage towards a road, right? It's not a backyard, it's sort of forgotten, and so we really think of that as a as a front yard in every respect.
Look, yeah, I just wanna ask another question too, maybe this is a David, with this site triangle, that applies to the building, not the canopy, I assume? That's twelve feet in the air, you know, because the that sideline is down low, because the canopy would, you know, stick out over top of that area.
Provided it has ample clearances.
No post or anything.
As large a vehicles as you can get on public thoroughfares. That seems to be a sensible request that you could ask for the opinion of the planning board.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, we're good for a truck driver, right, over the front?
Well, fourteen feet would be the 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 standard maximum height for a truck.
For the truck, but you're talking about line of sight.
But the line of sight is like seven and a half feet on a truck, where normal car is like three, or three and a half, or. Yeah, so, yeah, it's all under twelve feet.
And there are definitely trucks who, there's definitely truck traffic on Mulberry, so. You have something, Victoria?
Oh, I was just back to the parking, I suspect you're gonna lose a few more spaces, because you're only showing two handicap parking spaces?
On this side, there's, there's two over here.
We have five, I think.
Two there.
Only, only.
I only saw four.
Only four on Mulberry.
We have, um, there's one, two, oh, yeah, you're right, I didn't, I took that one out, because I have a great, I can't get it ramped up to there. Um, so there's two over here, and so that's four, and I believe the code, we could put one out front here too.
I was just gonna suggest, when you're doing your layout, that you talk to the building department, or look in the codes to determine how many spaces you're gonna use, so that you don't end up losing them down the road.
It's it's four percent is what the what the ADA requirement is, which is four for the first hundred, we don't have a hundred spaces, so.
Okay, so you have.
Yeah, yeah, but you might, I suspect putting one, if if this parking works, then putting one there.
Just have to work in a ramp somewhere, but that could happen.
That would be good.
Tom?
Pardon me, tell any part of how we consider the rail trail, I think we'd make a simple request for a judgment by the village attorney about what that can be considered to be, whether it's considered to be a road or whatever.
Yes, you could look into that.
Who is the village attorney?
Well, our, well, you want them, we'll just have our attorney do it.
Well, your attorney is capable of doing that kind of research as well.
Sure.
I thought we were friends.
Are you there?
No, she, okay, sorry, um, we'll we'll do introductions. So Victoria Polidoro is with the firm who, Rodenhausen and.
Shaw.
Shaw, thank you, Rodenhausen and Shaw, who are is the, who are the attorneys for the planning board.
So are you a member or representing the attorney, the consultant?
I'm I'm an attorney.
She's an attorney, she's.
Also a member, you're a voting member, right?
No, no, no.
No, you're you're the consultants of the board.
She's our, she's our attorney, and
Got it.
Along with George Rodenhausen, who is not here tonight. Um, planning board members, Rich Sudo, myself, John Litten, Liz Harsho, and Rich Devens, who is unfortunately with the flu. Christina Karp is our secretary, Bill Murray is our alternate member of the planning board, Dave Gilmore, you know, and
So the question being.
Tom Rocco is our liaison from the, he's a village trustee and liaison from the village board.
One of the, one of the questions before we moved on a bit was how I interpreted on two twelve thirteen C regarding that it didn't appear that parking should be provided in the front yard. And two twelve thirteen C is the onsite parking guideline. And the narrative before the sub items within two twelve thirteen provides for, oh, excuse me, in two twelve thirteen C, it reads that parking should be located in the rear of the property and behind retail goods and services of professional offices and/or at the side of a building wherever possible. So considering that this was a front of a building, it seemed like there were preferences for side or rear. In this case, I understand the argument being made for another front, but it doesn't seem that it promotes parking in the front. That's a, um, it it seems to direct elsewhere.
It doesn't promote, but it doesn't restrict.
Right, it's just preferable.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't promote, but it it does promote, but it doesn't restrict.
Mike, maybe I could be on one of the comments.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
I think we have comments for each of the things here and some questions, and maybe we can just, want me to just kind of load through those?
So, yeah, so, uh, questions would be preferable at this point, we can, I mean, so that we can try to address those.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Okay. All right, then I'll stick over, well, you don't want to, let me just give you the ten seconds.
Go for it.
So on on two C, we do intend to remove the snow, build on excessive snow below off-site, so that is a part of our plan. That was raised in two C. In two D, as I've told you, we have started a conversation with Christina Boer, she and I have traded a number of notes and spoken lines. And we do intend to fully bring this, them into the planning process here. Two E, we we have, we believe we'll have enough lighting under the awnings, we don't intend to put additional, um, street lighting here. There is a street light on the telephone pole, if you look at.
Intersection.
Here, that's right, there is one street light already there, but we we prefer to have subtler light than that. In terms of the existence of that, that answers the decorative pole question. Two F, we were seeking a little bit of clarification on this, and let me remind myself what that is.
We we didn't quite understand, are you sure that comment?
So our our objective is, as I mentioned before, um, the objective in this district is ultimately to have a continuous sidewalk, especially on the west side, that runs the entire length and then ties into the to the district to the south. So what we're hoping is that we'll see how the process unfolds. We have a application in for a planning grant with the, through the county, that would help us deal with a number of infrastructure issues that we'd like to get in place in this, including sidewalks. But if if you, if you are developing the sidewalk here, and we ultimately want to be able to continue it across the the abutment that's there, we would like to just, we can have an easement, that's all.
Yeah, no problem.
And in a sense, while I didn't mention the request of the county for a crosswalk perpendicular to Mulberry, it would also be beneficial to have an easement for future sidewalk and cross.
Sure.
Along Mulberry as well.
Yeah.
Agreed. And even preferably along the frontage of Mulberry, would be my recommendation, if that's not provided now.
Meaning if the sidewalk comes onto the site, then you won't have an easement, so.
That makes abundance.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think some way of, at least up to the rail trail, I think beyond that, the sort of the the feel of the neighborhood changes, it's probably not gonna, I don't think there'll be a lot of support for sidewalks into the historic district, but but as you're connecting through to the rail trail, we we might wanna have something along Mulberry. So why don't you keep going, David?
Yeah, so three A, we already talked about the rec, those buildings around for revenue management stores there. We're hoping that, again, that we can, that we can have that declared as a front yard as well, to address that in three A. Any more you wanna say on that area?
No.
So there was that comment about shade tree commission, and so if you're wanting to treat, I I think I I might just recommend taking a look at the standards for shade tree commission review within the two twelve thirteen G section of code. That might, I wonder if that should be part of a question to the, um, to the village attorney as well as if if it is frontage, whether there may be jurisdiction of the shade tree commission in that.
Yeah, I think, I mean, this, the, pushing for this option is gonna come with some consequences as well, so you should be clear that putting your dumpster enclosure in your front yard may not go over so well as putting it in your backyard. So you might wanna consider things like that as we go through it, because otherwise, you're gonna get embroiled in a bunch of variances that, um.
Well, except for your new code has a zero front yard setback.
Okay.
So.
But dumpsters aren't allowed in front yards.
Are dumpsters not, is that in your code? Dumpsters are not allowed in front yards?
Um, I'm not sure if it's exactly, I don't, I don't know. It has to be behind. But I'm pretty sure. The line of the building. Yeah, okay, so.
Do you know what section of code that is?
What is that? It's probably within the section of code that I cited regarding the that enclosure itself, so. I'll follow the site from my memo.
Yeah, I did, I didn't see that, maybe I just missed it, I'll look again.
Well, before you get too deep into it, we'll have Victoria evaluate whether this is gonna be a feasible definition, and then we can, we'll let you know, we can deal with the specifics of that.
Okay, that'll be good.
Okay.
Okay.
So keep going.
Is there anything we wanted to ask about the, I'm having a, I'm struggling to turn my notes on this one. A piece about the ten-foot rear yard for the loading area? Anything that you wanna ask about?
Well, yeah, I I don't, I didn't see in the code where it prohibits parking for loading area in that setback, and maybe I just couldn't find it. But I I looked at the references here, and I didn't see where it's specifically prohibited that.
I have to defer to Dave on this, your issue about the loading area?
Well, it also has to do with A, agency, the parking, because we have parking on the north end of the site there, that's within ten feet of the property line, and if that's interpreted as a rear yard, which I believe it is, um, and, you know. No, no, that's.
No, the, on the roadside.
On the edge there. Well, you want to call it side yard.
North, yeah.
North, that's north.
Well, this this strip right here.
Yes.
Well, this actually is an existing parking lot there?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But but you're right, we don't have the ten feet here, but if that's a frontage, that shouldn't be an issue, I don't think, unless there's someone who says no parking in the front yard, but you have a zero front yard, so it wouldn't be in the front yard then. Same thing with the building, it says no dumpster in the front yard, front yard zero is on the line. But over here, this, I believe, under the definition of the code, being opposite of frontage, the rear, it require, if that does require the parking to be ten feet, we have a problem with that, so I didn't see in the code where it says we can't have parking within a rear yard. So I'm just raising that question.
No, in the code, it says that that parking should not be, and that's in the articles in the back, no, actually, where that orange piece of paper is. Among many other supplementary lot height and yard regulations, which is Article Four. And there they do specify that I just had it. The lot frontage for any lot shall be measured along the minimum building setback line for the zoning district, but in this zoning district, it's zero up to fifteen, uh, so it's not a set number of zero, it it varies depending upon the lot.
It's planning board discretion on those issues.
Right, yes, yes, it is. Depending upon the configuration of the lot and what.
Right, so if we make a case, for example, that this is a benefit to the community, not just us personally, it might be approval depending.
True.
And it does, that that back line buys us quite a bit of parking for the retail.
They also get into awnings and canopies in this, um, Article Four, which, uh, in in the blue book, or in the zoning book is on page two twelve, semicolon, forty-three, uh, through forty-four, forty-five, quite a ways. And how much awnings or movable canopies, cornice's eaves, how much they are allowed to encroach into any yard. That might be to be a benefit to trash receptacles.
Okay, I I see right here, yeah.
You got it?
It said, yeah, it says, no accessory building shall be located closer to the street than the street wall of the principal building. So so that that is a problem there. So that's section two twenty, uh, two twelve dash twenty A, Ron.
And there's also two twelve dash twenty-two regarding trash receptacles under that, um, Article Four. They also specify more things about dumpsters on page two twelve forty-nine, if that helps you.
That would mean we're gonna be dumpster building east to the line of the building.
But that's if you call it a front.
If we call it a front, we have to put it behind the building.
Right.
Right, so maybe we do two front yards or not.
Well, we have to, I'd like to know the trade-offs of both.
So really, one of the principal things we need, I'm sorry?
Where are we to go for no variances, or no variances, or no variances?
I'm sorry.
I guess one of the principal things we need to determine and define is what is front, what is back for you guys? And then we can look at the appropriate codes, but really, we can't do anything until you guys decide what you want as your front and your back, otherwise, we're just kinda tossing ideas.
Going around.
But that's, but what would we position for is depending on what the implications are.
So you'll need to work that, you'll need to work that out, identify that, in the meantime, we'll have Victoria research this to because if, just determine if it's even possible for you to look at the rail trail as a as a front. If it's not, then that's moot, if it is, then you can make a decision, so we'll get you that information.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, okay, move on.
Three D, we are planning, we don't have it in those elevations, but we we are planning to do electric car replacements, again, part of the ethic of this thing, I have a partially electric car, so I'm very sensitive around that. The, and we, yeah, we're happy.
We're covered, so.
Yeah. We've already, in terms of impacts of the project, site view impacts of the project, this is a big reason why we invested in these renderings, to give a sense of the building from from all sides, from Mulberry side to the, the north side and the rail trail side. So we're hoping that that's, you know, gives some sense of that.
We're gonna need probably more than just three D renderings, I think because of its because of its proximity to neighborhood of single-family homes and to the historic, the local.
homes and to, um, the historic, the locally, the locally designated historic district, not necessarily the landmark district. Issues of how people who, especially people along here, but even people who live on the other side of Huguenot Street, um, what are they going to see in terms of across the tree canopy, um, if anything? And, um, as John pointed out, also issues about for these immediate neighbors, whether there are going to be any concerns about light off of the west side of the building, if there's some way to get a sense of, you know, worst-case scenario, everybody's got their apartments fully lit and, um, not realistic, but, you know, some reasonable version of that, um, to see how we can mitigate that. And so, a, a reasonable enough, and Chuck, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce you guys, but Chuck Voss and Glenn DeGaley are, um, from Barton and the Judas, and so they'll be the engineering firm that will be working on this. And so, um, we'd like to be able to present them with something they could do an analysis of, so that, um, so some of that is quantitative and some of it's going to be, um, also talking to neighbors and getting, because I, I'm pretty confident that that's an issue that's going to come up during public hearing. So, these are very helpful from a, from a, to get a sense of, of space on paper, but we're going to need something more quantitative, a, a true visual analysis of some sort.
And then another question that I would ask the board is whether you would also be interested in seeing some of the landscaping program for the sub presented within the visual analyses as well.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Um, I mean, that's possibly also a way to help mitigate things that are identified through the visual analysis, so...
Sure.
I mean, it sounds like for the exterior lighting, you're handling this in a way that will, if you're meeting dark sky standards, then that, that particular part won't be a major issue, so...
We can also look at what kind of spread you would get from the illumination of the building.
Right, that would be great.
You've got to see it, but whether you get it spread, I can, I can...
Right.
Probably the spread, but...
Yeah.
Obviously, if it's, you know, buildings lit up, you're going to, you're going to be able to see it, but whether there's any actual light, you know, intensity coming off of that, you know, we can show that we'll shade that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, the issue is not, it's, the goal is not to make this a stealth building, we're not trying to make it invisible. It's a busy corridor where the goal is to make this into a neighborhood. People, you know, the, the expect, we're not, you're not plopping this in the middle of a foreign country, so we understand it's going to be there, it, it's really, it's not so much, can you see it, but what are the impacts going to be when people, so that's, and you understand that.
Yeah, let me ask you a question, this is a new zone you just adopted that has, you know, obviously a height restriction that was increased. Was there a secret determination made on that when the zoning was changed, as far as raising the height within the zone?
It was done as part of the secret review by the village board.
It was a type one action, that it was secret performance part of the zoning.
Yeah.
So, so the height of the buildings were a consideration in that determination of significance when the zone was changed? I'm just trying to establish if maybe, you know, this determination was made already.
Well, the, okay, so, he, I understand where you're going with this. This wasn't a generic environmental impact statement, so it's not as if we looked at every detail...
They say it was not...
It was not a generic environmental...
It was just a negative...
It was a, it was a, it was a type one action done by the village board for, for a zoning change, the, the substantial modification to an existing district.
Right.
Slight expansion of the district and then, um, significant change in the code. But it wasn't a generic environmental impact statement, so the, the parameters that are set up are being done with a sense of what would be appropriate, but it's theoretical, so it's not, it's not a carte blanche to say, okay, every building can be forty-six feet high and fifty feet high. In the same sense that in any district, you always look at, you know, what are the implications of putting a thirty-five foot building i- in that particular location? That may be allowable by the code, but then you have to look at what's really happening on the ground. So, we're not, I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to push back in a way that...
Yeah.
But, um, but yes, it was, um, it was an understanding that in order to get this kind of density, to have this kind of mixed use, we want it to go up.
Sure.
So, we'll see where it goes. Um, okay.
So, so on six, I think we covered the lighting, so six, um, yes, you know, as, as Barry all, every line...
Yeah.
Outline, we're significantly increasing the, the permeable surface of the lot.
Yeah.
And of course, and we're, we're looking to put rain gardens in the front, um, and trees wherever we...
Which front?
Two of them. If we get our interpretation.
So, let me, I'm just going to accelerate this a little bit, or expedite this a little. So, you, you went over stormwater pretty well, unless you have specific questions for us.
Well, I just want to point one thing out, is that we are under the threshold of one acre on our total site disturbance.
Okay.
We wouldn't be preparing a SWIP in accordance with the state regulations, however, we are preparing a stormwater management plan...
Okay.
To, you know, show that, you know, we're, we're not going to impact any real problems.
Good, that's good, and...
And one, I commend you for doing the lead silver, presumably it's the new construction standard. It would be great if you're willing to volunteer how you'll meet the sustainable site standards within the new construction, uh, methodology to help also inform us on, uh, topics like stormwater, if you're interested in sharing that information.
All right, so we've already, you've already indicated you're going to meet the fifteen percent affordable housing as per our village code, so that's great. So, so let's just talk about A for a moment.
A, you can ignore, that was just my stupidity, I wrote that.
Fair enough.
I didn't, especially you spent...
That's okay.
You can ignore that.
All right.
I'm a novice.
No, no, no apologies, it's fine. So, there is an issue about seeker, we think it's probably a non-starter, but you will want to, um, okay, so this NBR district is adjacent to the village's, um, H district up there, which is in yellow, which is an historic district. It includes lots of nonhistoric properties, but it does include the entire historic Huguenot Street, which is itself a nationally registered landmark district.
When I looked on the, um, state's database on that, we were quite a ways away from...
Okay, which is what we expect.
Yeah, we're not, you know, adjacent to any of them. But you mentioned earlier something about local historic districts.
Well, I meant, I meant only, sorry, I didn't say that clearly, I meant only that this is our historic district per code.
Okay, got it.
Right, um, so, that's all, but the, but the area of, of particular concern is what's over here, where the actual...
Right, yeah.
National landmark historic district is located.
So, so with all that said, I believe we're in on listed action.
Okay, so you'll just want to make sure that that's included in your, in your EAF, so that we have that, um, as, as part of the narrative that you've done that. The zoning amendments that, um, you were, um, told about are, um, bookkeeping stages that we need to make, that we, as you understand, were originally supposed to be in there, one of them, you've already identified, the first floor heights are going to be exceeding what we were hoping the minimum would be of eleven feet. And the other one is that for, in our Schedule A, there was no indication about whether you could or could not have general and professional offices, and it's our intent to allow them as a special use along with the other things that are allowed as special use, so that, those are the modifications.
Yes, that was clear.
Okay, good. Are there any other specific things that we want to tell this team before we let them go, we move on?
Well, um, would that end our discussion on this particular...
For tonight?
Site?
Only for tonight.
For tonight? Um, I mean, what we're trying to do is give them answers to questions and give them some feedback, so that they can prepare a full application, um, which they'll submit to us, and then we'll start the process of determining completeness, um, and, you know, referring stuff to Ulster County Planning Board, setting a public hearing and...
Understood, okay.
Yeah.
Um, yes, there, there's something that, that I find troublesome.
Okay.
Um, and I appreciate the, greatly appreciate all the solar stuff, I think that's a wonderful I'm, I'm having a hard time wrapping my, my head around, um, putting the solar panels on the north side up so high, so that you have some sort of, uh...
Like, um...
Roof outdoor park, um, which, uh, you know, on the, on the bad side, uh, on the negative side, I see as being a, a light issue, a noise issue at all hours of the evening and all sorts of terrible things. In addition to, not, not just the, the lighting and the noise that could come from this little, let's call it an outdoor park, you know, private park, um, but your, your total height, including the elevator, uh, is going to end up being sixty-two feet, uh, which is way above the fifty plus a parapet. And I'm kind of wondering if, if elevating that up and having that little outdoor seat patio, while, you know, kind of nice if I were living there, um, uh, because of the, the extra height that that would cause and having the elevator that much higher, um, I, I think we're really pushing the height thing there. Uh, if, if our original intent was to be fifty feet plus minor parapet things and decorative things, then another, another twelve feet is a whole nother story.
So, so let me, let me ask whether to separate the two issues of, you know, the solar lining, it seems like a lot of stuff above the fifty-foot thing. You know, imagine that without that and just a rooftop area exposed, right, that people could go up to, um, would you feel similarly about the presence of a gathering space?
No, I, uh, my only issue of, of a gathering space is, uh, since it would be outdoors, what sort of lighting it would have up there and how that would affect the neighbors.
Let's, like, think about those separately, the, the overall height thing versus the noise lighting.
Yeah, I mean...
Which are different issues, right?
Right.
Yeah.
It's, because I know that you could take those solar panels and put them down just where all the others are too, if you so desired, but if you wanted that same number of solar panels and a patio, yeah, you'd have to raise it up, but my issue with raising it up is your whole, the silhouette of the building is then a whole nother story higher on that end, and I, I think that's kind of pushing it visually, aesthetically.
You know, I can at least explain some of the, how the heights got that high, and with my interpretation of the new code and specifically the building height, you know, requirements, limitations and what is not restricted. The new code appears to allow or possibly encourage a rooftop, uh, space, and then when you have handicap access...
A rooftop space of...
A, a rooftop, like terrace...
Recreational space?
Terrace, a terrace space, it, it seems to, um, I may have a, you know, maybe mistaken about that, but if you do, then you have a space there, um, you can't just have a stair to it, you have to have an elevator, so it's handicap accessible, and so, this, the elevator, you know, needs to have a beam thirteen feet above the level you're accessing, so that's why...
I understand that.
Right, it starts getting a bit...
Structurally, that's, it's, if you need an elevator, that's how high it would have to be, but still, that gets us sixteen feet of, uh, excuse me, twelve feet higher, uh, another story higher with some sort of structures, whereas the code was written to be fifty feet plus miscellaneous stuff that you would normally have on the roof, uh, like the lower, uh, solar panels or, or, um, whatever else, some sort of stacks, you know, uh, air vent stacks, uh, air conditioning units, whatever you would normally have on a roof, that's okay, but you're raising that up, um, you're, you're basically adding another story.
So, okay, so, I think you, you assessed this pretty well, so the, you've got a couple of issues, and, and...
Sorry.
Putting in, putting in elevator shaft that continues up, I think is pretty different from what was just considering, that has a very different, um, look to it coming up from a building than having a substantial amount of space that's sixteen feet higher that's covered by solar panels. And, so I, I think it's, um, you'll need to consider these issues. You make very good points, and through the assessment, through the environmental assessment process, I think that's one place in particular where these kinds of impacts will come up, and so you'll want to be considering these alternatives.
Yeah, I guess I would ask, you know, it, it was the intent of the code to create, um, usable space...
Sure.
And if so, would you also want to support the complementary goal, in our view, of encouraging solar?
Oh, I, I'm not discouraging solar at all, I'm just saying that you have to work it out within the fifty-foot thing, not sixty-two.
No, I know, but I'm saying in terms of, in terms of evaluating the, the trade-offs of all of these effects, right, of, why I say effects and...
Well, that's, that's what the secret process would work out. They can't make their decision now on the trade-off without looking at the environmental impacts of each particular alternative.
I just, I just want to say...
Keep this, because we take their, provide their...
Yeah, I, this is...
State opinion, go home, think about it.
Just in the interest of time, because we have other things on our agenda, we can't have a lengthy discussion.
Sure.
Liz makes a very good point, and just take it home with you and discuss it, would be the best thing. Thank you for bringing that up.
There's just two things that I needed to ask.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. When we come to second floor uses, and you tell me if this is something we can defer until application, but I'm being approached by various folks who would like to use the second floor for various uses, and I'd look, I'd like some guidance from you as to what those may, can be.
Why don't you tell us what the various uses are?
So, this would be like a, a, sort of like a private hair salon, for example, one where it's not, there's not optisheep, uh, you know, people walking in, it's all by appointment, um, as opposed to open and reasonable section, so that would be an example of one use.
Would they live there also, like a home location?
No, no.
Is that the only various uses?
It's the only one that's, uh, that's been neatly described. Um, I know that the, it's described in the code as being off, general office type space and the use, and I, and I still don't know if that falls in.
Okay.
The, the other one is, um, the, the use of restaurant, the distinction between a restaurant and a bar tower. So, the pri- previous manager of Shays over here, right, approached me about the possibility of having a place here, not to do a Shays thing, um, but to have primarily a restaurant, but that we still have the ability to serve alcohol bar, and I just don't know what the definitions are around that.
Right, um, and we're not going to, we're not going to nuance all that tonight. Definitions have been clarified in our code, restaurants, um, provided they go through the New York State liquor license, the New York State Liquor Authority are entitled to have licenses for serving alcoholic beverages, beer and wine, or beer, wine and spirits, but we can, uh, get into the specifics about what the distinction between a bar and a restaurant, um, what those are, and, so, but, yeah.
And then, and then the final one is the, does the code, does the code drive the size or number of retail spaces, like how we subdivide that retail space? Is there any, I just...
I don't think it does, other than it sets maximum sizes for certain things, but I'm not sure if that's even a concern in, um, in this situation where it's a mixed-use building. I don't recall that it does.
I don't think it does.
Yeah, so, I mean...
I didn't see anything as obvious.
Yeah, no, I don't think so, I mean, I think the, the intent was to try to keep it as flexible as possible, so that would be up to the property owner how you want to subdivide things.
would be up to the property owner, how you want to subdivide things, you know, and whatever New York State Building Code permits. But we'll get back to that as well.
Can we answer your question about the second floor possible business?
We're going to need to, we'll need to explore that. My first inclination based on the example you gave is probably no, especially if they're not living there.
Right. The language here says anything above the second floor is a residential.
Or-
But the second story shall be limited to residential or a mixture of residential and non-residential. And so I think it's something that you have to propose and then the board has to review it. Again, it's going to impact your parking and it, I mean, that's what it says here.
Yeah, no, that is. I think that was another thing that got altered in translation during, between the committee discussions and the actual passing of the law. So, okay, but, you know, we'll-
You're suffering from our growing pains on this one.
We'll work with you on that, yes.
You're getting fixed.
It was all, I always had the impression that there was this other use division as optional for the second floor, that it could have this sort of mixed use, but it wasn't clear to me where exactly that.
Yeah, well-
It's not clear to us either.
I guess we're going to sort that out. Okay, so you've got traffic study, you mentioned another study to me that you are working on.
Well, we just, our phase one is wrapping up. It's supposed to come today, it's going to be tomorrow.
Okay. And so in order for you, so there's two ways to look at this. So we have a meeting on February 2nd, we have a meeting on February 16th. If you have, the primary thing we'll be doing on the second, the primary thing we'll be doing when we have materials from you that the building inspector has collected and you've paid your fee and set up an escrow, will be to then, at our planning board meeting, will be to go through the materials and make a determination of completeness so that we can then send stuff up to Ulster County Planning Board. We could, at that point, probably set a public hearing and sort of do a quick review of the various materials, secret and so forth. So you could try to get stuff in for February 2nd if you feel like you have all the materials. I think-
Where are the base? Is it secret or have to be done?
Well, you have to, you've done your EAF, but you want to go back and look and make sure that you've, make sure that it's complete and, as Victoria pointed out, put in a narrative that addresses some of the issues that we raised. We'll want to have all of these studies that you're providing. And we need time for our engineering consultants and for our planner and legal to take a look at this. So I think realistically, you should get the materials in as timely as you can, but your-
Mr. Chairman, I think we promote a two-week standard submission, so taking that since we haven't made February 2nd.
Oh, that's true, right, okay. So will, so really it makes sense for us to see you on the 16th?
And are you going to then declare the pre-application stage closed this evening?
The pre-application stage?
Well, I wonder if maybe we just continue this discussion on the 3rd, because it seems to me there's a lot of issues floating around here. Gives us time to go back and have a pow-wow and figure out how we do this. Your attorney could interpret, you know, the frontage issue and then we come back because I-
I would rather-
I'm still waiting now on opening the year as to making a complete application.
Okay, no, that's a good point.
That's a good idea.
I hadn't thought about that. Go ahead.
One consideration we were just talking about was whether the consultants could really begin working on this until pre-application is over.
Say that again, I'm sorry. No, I think I know what you mean, but say it again, because-
Right, so generally, escrow doesn't, you don't collect escrow until the pre-app discussion is over.
Right.
So the planner and the attorney and the engineer couldn't really dig into it until that pre-application stage is over.
Well, is there a problem of putting up the escrow?
No, no, you can put it up now. I mean, so, you know, we get lots of, we certainly have gotten pre-applications where people come up, they float an idea and we don't see them again. So that doesn't seem to be like what's going to be happening here. You've made a pretty substantial investment. So yes, you can, you can go ahead and establish an escrow and in advance. I mean, your pre-application is very detailed, so we fully expect that you'll be returning with a full application. So if you'd like to do that, then I think what you're suggesting is a good idea. We can continue this pre-app.
Yes.
You guys can begin working on this and you can do the research that you really need to do. It's kind of a catch-22 otherwise, isn't it? Yeah. So sure, let's do that. So we'll plan to see you in a round two of pre-application.
Well, and especially because they're the first ones in this new zoning thing, that I think an extended pre-app is probably worth everyone's while.
So we got to break the ice?
Yes.
We'll bring the bubble.
All right, good. So I will, tomorrow we have a meeting that will include the building inspector. I'll get an idea from our consultants what a good amount would be to start for an escrow and I'll let you know that sometime tomorrow.
And you'll give instructions on how to-
And then you'll just come to the building department and you can alert them. I'll let them know that.
So you hold the escrow?
We'll set up a, we'll set up a trust and agency account that will have that money in there. They can explain to you in the building department what the procedures are for maintaining an escrow account, so. All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's just take a minute or two while everybody clears out of this. Is that okay?
I'm sorry?
We can take like a minute while they get out of here and get on the rest of their business.
Oh, yeah. Conference room is still being used, so we can't go into executive session there.
All right.
Stick everybody out here. Conference room is still in session or whatever. There you go, I'll hold down the court.
Thanks, guys. Thanks.
All right, let's get back to order here.
Parents, you think that there's a homeowners association, they say you can use the common area, but only between the hours of this and this.
All right, let's, you know, thank you all very, very much for all the input into that. Personally, I think it's very exciting, but it'll be a lot of work trying to get the first project through the review process in this new district. Okay, so zoning issues. So the, you got everything? The first two items under our zoning are sort of dovetail with one another. What I'd like to do is get a sort of a status update on what's going on with 21223 and the committee meeting that happened with the CBA Planning Board and Village Board members. This issue about completeness was something that George and Victoria brought up that I think is something that we want to consider in general and it's sort of, I think if some of the definitions that you've proposed will fit nicely into the changes with 21223 and in fact make perhaps some of the discussion easier for you all when you go back to your committee. So first off, Dave and Bill, if you would just give us an update from the meeting. Are you up for that, Bill?
Yeah, I could surmise it quickly.
Yeah.
We met for, what, three hours last Thursday, this Thursday, Alan, well, you left it. Alan, Brian, David, Roger, Terry, myself.
Okay.
We spent a great deal of time on page one, got to page two. We do, it's pretty expensively, I have to say, a great deal of discussion about each one. We did not come to any kind of conclusion or recommendation on how we would, however, Dana was going to, he was taking incredible steps throughout the process, was going to try to merge our comments, questions, suggestions into Terry's document. And I'm not sure-
Well, it was my understanding that I was taking some, I took some notes and I would try to make a very brief summary of the meeting. It was my understanding that one of the attendees would do the next stage of wordsmithing and we spent quite a bit of time on the submission thresholds for a site plan as well as the sort of minor classification. So we spent a lot of time, as Mr. Murray said, on pages one and two.
Okay.
And I think Terry was going to try to incorporate what we discussed into his new document for us to review. But again, it was just a couple of pages that he wanted to address. It's the first couple of pages in this. What's your part of Snyder?
Right.
I'm going to ask you of the site plan review act is available to councilors.
Okay, so you still have twelve pages to go.
Yeah, no, but the feeling is, or the thinking is that the first couple of pages are the most detailed, pertinent, perhaps, technically, one of the pages to get into whereas subsequent pages might have various many questions or concerns.
Okay. When are you all meeting again? Do you have a date?
This Thursday.
Okay. Dualy noted. So the document that we have that has Terry's name on it, that was written, that's his, it wasn't vetted by the committee, he authored it. Okay, so that's his. Just want to be clear about that.
I did share with him, I have shared with him, as well as the whole group, the completeness standards should be discussed at our last planning board meeting in which your consulting attorney worked out.
Yeah, I think that's really important. I would, I personally, and we can get consensus or not from the board, but I really, I think those definitions as proposed by you all are excellent and would simplify a number of things here. Personally, one of the things that concerns me is the use of this term officially submitted. It's not defined, it's vague, and I don't understand what it is. And I feel like the concept of completeness as proposed in the definitions by Victoria and George takes care of that. It's a, those definitions are procedural in content. They explain what the building inspector does to generate an administratively complete application and then it explains what the planning board's purpose is in determining. So I ask that you consider that unless I hear hoots and hollers from the planning board members.
We did talk about having definition, being second, personal, as long as applied to the village, as well as floodplain, such, for example, the discussion about basement, was it basement, what are the requirements for basement for the village versus what are the requirements for basement for the floodplain?
Okay.
Or that there needs to be some sort of consensus, that we agree, that there should be some kind of consensus in very specific areas, around those definitions, how they apply to personal development.
Okay.
I can elaborate on that is, we had a, we got into a discussion that there's a, for example, a set of definitions within the floodplain development standards, the floodplain, which is essentially an overlay zone. So you've got your definitions in 212.5, but you also have another example of definitions within the floodplain development standards. And so there was a discussion as to whether you can actually merge the two and still not lose performance of definitions within the floodplain code that can also apply with other places within the whole zoning. So in some ways that was a topic a bit off of site plan review, but it came to practicality of the zone, the lay users' use of the zoning ordinance especially, so that when you're looking for definitions, you're not getting sidetracked if you're finding definitions within the floodplain development standards.
Any comments? So the only other thing I want to say, without, my greatest appreciation for all that you're doing. However, we've been working, trying to get this 21223 sections A and B update for some time. I think it's particularly important for the planning board to have this as applications come forward with this year so we can make a distinction between so-called major and minor. So to the extent that we can avoid bringing in way too many other things having to do with definitions in 212.5 and so forth, I would just ask that we try to get something together that we can. I feel like a lot of stuff in here is now pointed more towards the zoning board of appeals and your responsibilities and trying to deal with some specific issues that I know that are of concern to zoning board and in particular to Mr. Duncan and have been for many years. I'm not entirely convinced this is the place to try to address all of those issues. So I have some specific comments about things that are pages and pages beyond where you got and so I'll leave those for tonight. I won't bring those up. So anyway, if there's nothing else, then-
I would think, and I mailed you about this, that perhaps in three, two weeks, maybe two more meetings, that we then come back and have a meeting with the group-
That would be great.
Review things so that we know, feel like we're going to track or not track.
Okay.
Address your concerns, know what concerns will come up from whatever.
All right. I mean, if we could set a goal, we've been doing this since late last summer, so if we could set a goal to try to have something by the end of March that we could submit to the village board would be-
I think the group is looking to, maybe a lot.
Good, thanks. So the other issue under zoning is just to, we've, my understanding, Dave, is we've already submitted, based on your memo, we submitted, you submitted that memo to the village board concerning these requested changes to the NBR.
I'm sorry, you were provided the memo that I developed on the day after your last planning board meeting to provide behind the agenda for the village board.
Okay.
And it's my understanding they had discussion even broader than those two topics on the NBR district at their last meeting. I haven't listened to the content of the last village board meeting.
Will you add that, Neil?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anything you'd want to add?
We're appreciative of the clarifications that are being provided.
Good.
And the village board very much wants to facilitate the development of the NBR district, as you all know, and therefore we're prepared to act, I can't speak for this, for what other village board members will say, but I believe that we're prepared to act to make sure that we can move the projects forward.
Uh, no, it's quite toward the end and it's, there's a referral to the next, the upcoming meeting and it was about the
You mentioned Pencil Hill is a pre-application and should have been an application.
Right.
Ongoing.
Okay. Ongoing application. Other than that
I have one typo on the very last page of a German, it says Mr. Stevens and it should be Stephens.
True.
So auto spelling correct, probably bitch you there.
Okay, anything else?
I didn't find anything else.
So motion to approve the minutes of 1/5/2016 as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So next meeting's February 2nd. We know we're going to continue the pre-application discussion with Net Zero. I'm expecting that we will probably have the Pencil Hill application back in front of us. The applicant will, is supposed to be just talking with his engineer later this week about the site visit and the follow-up from that, probably also the subdivision request that we've made. And so I'll be in touch with him before the agenda goes out next week to determine if that'll be on, but for now we'll assume that it is. Any other applications in front of us, Christina? That I know?
None.
Okay. So we'll do those and there may not be any zoning stuff that we need to cover. And so that might be it, just those two.
And Michael, who's on for tomorrow's planning for planning meeting?
Yes, tomorrow is Liz, the 20th, are you available to do the agenda meeting at 1:30?
Yes.
Okay. If you want to come, it's not going to be public.
I have a morning thing
If you can't, that's okay.
No, 1:30 I can do.
We'll just be doing those two. But I really don't think there's a whole lot else that we need to cover. I can't think of any outstanding zoning things at the moment. Do we want to circle back and start doing anything that was on Bran White's list? Or should I leave well enough alone for
You want to, you want to move through with the definition of subdivision within the subdivision regulations and
We can talk about it, we can talk about it tomorrow.
Sounds like we're going to blow back.
I'll see if I can get to you with stormwater.
I'm getting some boots and hollers from my board here. Our board, I should say, it's not my board. Okay, real quickly, just to skip, we have a trust and agency account letter. It was dated today, this is for the PB 1519, PB 1519, it was the Church Street Cafe that came in and we dismissed it as not requiring a site plan. So the full escrow of $1,000 is still in there, we'd like to close that, there's no outstanding invoices. So I have a motion to recommend to the treasurer and board of trustees that we close that account and cut a check to the applicant in the amount of $1,000.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
You guys got a fight over that one. All in favor?
Liz, second.
Whoever she writes down.
I
All in favor?
I
I Excellent. All right. Okay, I sent around a draft of a letter. I know it's 9:15, but what I really need is some feedback because I would very much like to get this process started. Attorney's office is in favor of this idea of expanding the retainer. The treasurer's office would very much like to try to reduce the number of escrows.
Yeah.
And I think as we've discussed already in terms of benefits to the community and to applicants, this is something. So what we need to do is work out the details of this. I'd like to, you guys meet again when this month?
Uh, a week from tomorrow.
Okay, so
And I'm prepared to put this as a motion before the board.
Okay. Can we do that without your two-meeting rule sort of thing?
We can put the motion in and if, if people think it's urgent or at least significantly, you know
Okay.
Is, is there a significant reason that we can waive the two-meeting rule? Otherwise
All right, we'll see.
We'll make the deal.
All right. Ideally, I'd like to try to get this in place by February 1 so that we could have an agreement with them. So I guess my question to you is, is there any, are there any things in the letter that I drafted that you want to change or
No.
No, you guys are okay with it?
Yeah.
You know, just a set of arguments to compel them. Here, I looked today to see if there was any additional monies in the planning board line that we could reallocate to, to reduce the $2,000 that we're asking for, but that doesn't appear to be the case. So we would be asking for the full $2,000. Anyway, okay, then I'd like to make a motion to authorize me to sign this letter and submit it to the village board to request an increase in the retainer for legal services from 333 33 a month to 833 33 a month for all the reasons stated in the memo.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you guys. So we would like to go into executive session briefly to discuss matters leading to the possible employment of an individual or corporation and we may take an action coming out of it just again to authorize me to go ahead and sign a contract that we agree upon although we're actually going to get a modified version of it probably before then, so we can decide how you want to handle that. Anyway, and then we'll adjourn. So that's it for tonight's entertainment.
Weekend sliding the other room
This is room empty now? Okay, so we'll do that.
To let this
Yeah, to actually vote on the motion.
Motion to Oh, I know, I know. And you got, you got all that. But thank you because I probably would have just gotten up and walked out. Anyway, is there anything else? Then motion to go into executive session to discuss matters leading to the possible employment of an individual or corporation. And we may take an action coming out of it just again to authorize me to go ahead and sign a contract that we agree upon, although we're actually going to get a modified version of it probably before then, so we can decide how you want to handle that. Anyway, and then we'll adjourn. So that's it for tonight's entertainment.
Weekend sliding the other room
This is room empty now? Okay, so we'll do that.
To let this
Yeah, to actually vote on the motion.
Motion to Oh, I know, I know. And you got, you got all that. But thank you because I probably would have just gotten up and walked out. Anyway, is there anything else? Then motion to go into executive session to discuss matters leading to the possible employment of an individual or corporation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. And thank you all very much. Thank you for coming, Victoria.
Thanks for having me. And I plan on coming out this second then?
Yeah, do plan to come to the second. What I'll do is if you could think about what you think a good starting escrow amount would be for your firm, let me know and then I'll put together something based on that plus the engineer.
Okay.
So
Do you see enough for you?
What's that?
Do you see enough?
I do, but my concern is that it might be
Let me confirm what I said, Mike.
Yeah.
All right, I thought maybe you were
No.